Well, we have a new select board liaison. Welcome Judy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. We look forward to seeing you on Teacher Thursday nights.
Excellent.
Actually, a survivor, she's done this before.
I have been here before.
Awesome. Well, most of us are new faces to you.
Yes.
There are many of us.
I've seen many of you in other lives.
Yes. So first on the agenda is approval of our minutes. Do we have any comments on the minutes that we need to?
I just had one typo.
Right, go ahead.
Just about item three.
Oh, yes.
He couldn't state it, I think it just needs to be AN instead of A.
Yep. An enrollment is spelled, misspelled numerous places.
Yes, those two L's.
Those two L's.
I also see that Mr. Manqueso's name is not spelled correctly the second time.
Oh, yeah.
He's not coming obviously.
No, he isn't, I.
Was that him that came tonight? And I sent him some alternate nights and I have not heard back from him, but I think he was on vacation by the time I sent it to him, so.
May I speak up for myself?
Well, sure, of course.
I would like to be the planning board's nominee to the zoning board.
Oh, well, there's no, there's not, there's, I don't think it's a good idea to have the planning board nominate one of their own members to.
I'm an alternate.
It's up to the board, but.
Even you think the select board should do it?
I think the select board should do it just as a, kind of separate everything.
Is there a opening for the select board to do that?
There is.
And select board?
I have not brought it to the select board yet, I have not said, it's on my list of, it'll be at the next meeting.
Does it matter to Evie whether it's as well?
Well, Evie would like to.
Sounds like she's still hot in the ring.
Yeah, she can talk to her and get to a meeting, she's really qualified. No, actually, she does great, like formatting and editing and specific writing, like technical writing stuff. But, so for zoning board decisions, she could be a great addition.
The secretary.
Well, who does the decision writing?
Adair.
Oh, Adair.
Adair Mollgin.
Yes, she has for a while.
She's hired, she's hired to do that.
Yes, she is. She's been doing it, I've been here 15 years and she's been doing it longer than that, so.
Well, getting back to the minutes, do I have a motion to accept the minutes as an amendment?
I'll make that motion.
Maybe, Tim is seconding.
And actually, Rich, I'd like to ask a comment. Question about, ordered, Tim mentions the note that we got from Mr. Doctormont, the principal of the line school. I think it would be useful to have that document as part of a, of a record. How can we make that happen?
I don't know. I would normally not include it in the minutes, is it's, you know, when you look down the road, you know, minutes are used for looking back at decisions and what was done, not necessarily, you know, the data behind it. And I just, I think you get, you start adding a lot of things into the minutes, it clouds the history. I just don't think it's a good practice, if, you know, putting it, you know, when, when decisions are made, saying it was based on data provided by, is perfectly fine, but to, to start adding a lot of data to the minutes, I don't feel it's a good practice.
Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty long, actually.
Well, but, I mean, it's, it's incredibly fact-rich and I think, you know, from a right-to-know public's ability to understand why we make decisions, maybe it should just say, the, the, a copy of Mr. Doctormont's letters available in town office.
You could either attach it to the minutes as a separate item or put it under the planning board heading as this was received in the planning board.
We could have it on the website, but.
Either, either way.
I wouldn't.
Because don't the minutes get published?
Yes.
Yeah, on the website, so it could just be an addendum to, not a part of the minutes.
So you're suggesting, you're suggesting it could be tacked on to the back of the, as a separate page?
A separate page.
That would be fun with me.
Yeah, it does, yeah, it does kind of bring up the, the subject of correspondence that comes to the board and, yeah, how does that get archived, if you will?
If it's part of a case, it would get archived with the, the case files.
Yeah.
Is we going through the master plan, you know, keeping a folder of information that was used for the master plan.
Yeah.
And that, that will be in the, that folder.
I'm just wondering, like, going back when we were doing our solar ordinance, we received a fair amount of communication from the energy committee and from.
Beth.
Mark Biglin.
Yeah.
Mark Ballinger, yes.
Yeah. And Mark Ballinger, I'm just wondering, does that ever get archived in any place that we?
It gets put in a folder and it's kept, I keep action in my records of.
Thing about it is that a lot of the stuff, I mean, it's appropriate for now, but in two years, especially up the solar stuff, it's going to be history. And they know this is clean, and same with the school situation, it could be changed. And so, I mean, I think if we think that, that, I mean, I feel like we need to actually use part of that school data in the narrative of our housing chapter, and we could always put, you know, as a appendix to that chapter, the school enrollment trends or something like that, but I, is it, you know, so keeping the stuff, I mean, I, I've been in my job for 22 years and I kept stuff and they, you know, it's all old, even like, oh, things about, you know, wetland regulation, it's all old. And it's, it's burdensome and I'm hoping your files don't get like my.
Oh, they are, because I still have stuff going, I have stuff from you.
Okay, well, that's old. But, you know, but I'm, it's just like, okay, to what purpose? And I think if we're going to use it, let's keep it and use it in our, our master plan, because I think we will use that. In fact, I have a note in here that says we should use it, if you disagree, we can change that. But I think we need to, that that whole school enrollment piece is really important for us to figure out what's the appropriate rate of growth in our town and specifically adding housing. So, I think a note to the effect that the letter from the super is available in the town office would be appropriate. That's the transparency that if somebody wanted to come and look, they could.
Right, so what if David can't find it?
Well, he can ask all of us.
Well, I also, you know, the 15,000 emails in my inbox that go back 15 years.
Oh, so you keep all your emails, so that it's, it's right there, so it's available in the town office?
Right.
Like that, okay, that makes, that makes me feel better, yeah.
So I liked your idea, I mean, could we just amend it to say, Mr. Doctormont's letter is available? That was distributed to the board and is available in town office.
Can you make that planning board office, so it's really clear?
With the zoning administrator, so that he isn't looking for it and going, I've never heard of the thing?
So are we adding a sentence at the end of that paragraph?
Yes, I'm suggesting that at the end of that paragraph, that starts out the principle, but when we use the school could accommodate and then just to say, a copy of Mr. Doctormont's letter. What is available in the planning board office?
In the zoning administrator's office.
I have a copy of this, this.
That's part of the, of the.
I maybe did print it.
I mean, data is useless if you can't find it.
Yeah. So I guess we need to bring this back to the people who.
I made a motion, Alex, of that amendment.
Okay, and you accept the amendment, okay. So now, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, we have, our second item on the agenda is a request for consideration of site plan review for some activities at the Dartmouth Skiway Lodge. David, do you want to fill us in on?
Let me pass what we're, what we're looking at. So Judy sent Tim and I a letter, asking the board to conduct a site plan review based on the fact that the skiway has updated their, they go to their bar area and.
They didn't have a bar area, did they?
Well, it's questionable, they, they were serving alcohol.
They're putting one in now.
Yeah.
Well, they served alcohol for special events, right?
Right.
That was not, that was not something that, as a skier, you walk into the cafeteria, you couldn't get alcohol.
No.
Okay, that I didn't know, I was not, I haven't been around here for.
There, there've never been.
The designated spot?
A bar area.
So there is a bar area now.
There isn't. It's being, it's being constructed.
And in the center of the lodge.
Yeah, I think it's a topless bar.
Topless or topus?
I mean, a topus.
We're recording Tim, it's a topus.
Tapus.
I thought I heard that, but maybe not.
And so in Judy's letter, she cited a couple of cases with the planning board, I have pulled the minutes for those and included them in the, what I just sent around, and I, Judy can probably.
Well, we were, and my apologies to Rich, I did not know you were the chair and I looked online.
More you can send off to Tim, that's great.
Followed up on what I saw, but we are just concerned, we are having some other issues with the skiway, we're not trying to create a big brew off. We will be sitting down with them shortly, the board of selectmen and their legal counsel and the skiway manager. But at the same time, we're concerned when we got a letter from the state liquor commission wondering if we had any concerns with them having a liquor license there. And we weren't aware of some of the changes that were being proposed to be changed. And initially, it did seem as though this was going to be a change in use, which required the planning board to look at it. I sat down and read through the cases from 99 through, I can't remember exactly when.
2002 and 2003.
2005 and then 2011, there were some other things that came up. And it just looked like there had been maybe some more things, some increase in use that hadn't really come before the board. And this seemed like a bigger change than having sort of a cafeteria for skiers. And it was anticipating rather than eight or 10 events a year for skiing competitions to eight or 10 events a month for private parties and other entertainment and we thought that this was the appropriate board to look at those proposed changes, look at the application, maybe have a site visit and report back to the select board about exactly what those changes were and whether or not they actually require the board to look at them under a change of use.
So it won't be open to the public as a bar?
I, I can't tell you that, I think.
Because that was pointing out that, I think in table.
Table 401 in the.
It says.
Says restaurants not permitted.
Well, that would be something that maybe this board should be looking at to see what they are intending.
Well, the restaurant is a customary accessory use of a ski lodge. A, you know, every skier you go to has a restaurant thing, it might be a cafeteria style and some of them have sit-down. So I would say that's customary and also I would say many of them have bars. And you can go down to Okemo and get a drink anytime.
Well, and that, that's, but that calls into question when they talked about initially, there were a lot of things that they weren't going to do that it appears like now they're going to be doing. So they had sort of a cafeteria food service.
Yep.
And I suppose someone could have walked in and gotten a sandwich and gotten a Diet Coke.
They had donuts there and coffee, and then they had big fatties up there doing.
Yeah.
But you're saying that's part of the creep?
Does it manage, does it matter who manages it?
Not to my, I mean, it's, it's the use.
Doesn't matter to what?
It shouldn't matter the ownership or like that.
Or the management.
Yeah, and I know that they have, I've been to two weddings up there where there's been caterers.
Yeah.
Caterers had a liquor license.
Well, I, I threw a wedding there and, or a reception and we took the responsibility and, and furnished the alcohol.
Right, so you got the liquor license.
Pardon me?
You got a liquor license.
I didn't have anything.
Or your caterer got the liquor license.
I didn't, there was no, caterer didn't bring anything, I just.
So you brought liquor.
Right, I brought liquor. Well, nobody told me anything different.
Right.
You know, so, so, you know.
Good example of creep, actually.
Yes.
Innocent, but expansion of what probably should be looked at for in this situation. So it's not just me looking at it, we have other issues as the select board, but this board has a lot of case history from 99 on. And I think David probably has the zoning permit in the plans for what they're planning on doing and how it's different from what they initially got approval for. And if it's not an issue, that would be great, if it is an issue, we just need to look at it and make sure we put conditions on it if we need to be conditions.
Well, just for a little information, I don't know whether it's printed, but I have a friend, Hal Covert, who was set up to do the food at the skiways. And he was there actually for three weeks just before they closed this year, then he was going to.
This year?
Yeah, then he was going to be there next year, he was contracted to do all the food at the skiway. Then they asked him to have the liquor license. And he was a little nervous about, he didn't know how much, how much insurance he was going to need, he didn't know what his, what his liability would be and all this. So he said, no, I don't want to do it. So I assume now they're going to be looking for somebody else to do the food next year.
I don't remember off the top of my head, because it's pretty dense in here right now, who applied, but someone has applied.
Yeah, so, right, so that, and they'll be doing maybe the food too, I don't know, I mean.
I can't tell you that.
Yeah.
But that's, that's what sort of sparked our, that there had been alcohol issues there. And now we've got this application for liquor license and, hey, I'd love to have a good time.
So, so the real bottom line for us, I guess, is how it affects the town. So in other words, traffic, there's no neigh, there's no close neighbors.
There's parking, there's traffic, there's safety and security, who's watching the exiting from the parking lot.
Right, Sean would be involved in this a lot.
Working them, right?
Sean is involved in it from a select board point of view, but if it's a college event, then the college should have people there. If it's not a college event and they're expecting, if they're opening a restaurant or a bar or whatever, then the town needs to know. Because the town does not have staff to be policing that. And there are a number of town issues involved right now, but this is specific to what they got committed for and what they're planning to do.
And it seems like there's a big difference between a public bar restaurant or just one for.
If you're there skiing and you're grabbing a hamburger and a beer, that's different.
Right, well, very attentive to the definitions in the ordinance, there's a definition for food service. And it's an eating establishment in the skiway district developed for active skiing participants and their guests and spectators. To eat tables, booths, encounters as part of the ski facility use. Seven.
Okay, but there's no alcohol.
Right, there's no alcohol.
Right, so we're, we envision a dry ski lodge.
Yep.
This is in the.
It's defined issues?
Yeah, it's defined.
Food service, yeah.
Judy, for context, what are some of the town issues just in broad, like, what are the things that you worry about?
There are clear safety issues, there are apparent alcohol uses in the parking lot. People wandering in and out of the road, parking in the road, making it a one-lane road. Events occurring without adequate college safety and security there, that are college events, the public coming in en masse to observe and kind of agree.
You mean like ski racism?
Yeah, and other things.
Remember they used to have those antique snowmobile racing up there, there was a lot of non-sanctioned drinking amongst that, that crowd.
Also, they're doing night skiing now, there was testimony when they built the new lodge that there would be no night skiing. Lights are an issue certainly for everybody.
Have they installed lights on the slopes?
I think they're lights on the slopes, if they're not, that's an even worse issue.
No.
Well, or, or is it the people that skin up and then they have a headlamp?
I think it's a combination, but, but they're, it's being encouraged rather than discouraged. So we have to send up a patrol car and a rescue squad, they are in danger now.
Sure.
And it's, when you look at it not from, oh, that'd be cool, as a participant to responsible for the safety of other individuals, it becomes a little less cool and with a very clear statement that there will not be this and then encouraging to have it and then trying to increase it, it's troubling. And it's more than, I believe, just the select board, I believe, you know, this group, you guys have your head in the planning board regulations and criteria and we have documents going back and we just need to look and see. And if that's not what it is, or if it is, we need to say, okay, we just need to make it so it's safe.
Yeah, there should be some guardrails.
Needs the regulations and then.
That's, that's, that context is really helpful, because it's starting to sound to me like we need a more comprehensive plan from the college about how they are envisioning the next five years of this, of usage here. And it's not just, you know, building a permit for the bar and.
No, it, it, that was a trigger.
But it needs, they need to address all of those points and it might be more efficient.
Which comes.
To wrap it all into one.
I think it comes, personally, that it comes under site plan review, change of use, but.
Should we have the building permit?
Yes.
Do, does it, what does it say it's going to do?
I have a plan for, you know, it's a remodel of the, the portion of the lodge, I don't remember the exact. But it did not, in the plan, I don't believe it talked about alcohol.
I think they're expanding the dining area and the kitchen area and.
And is there a dollar amount attached to that?
Yes, there is.
I just have a question, there's a prevailing thought out there, at least in the conservation commission, that the skiway can do whatever it wants out there. Is that true?
No, well, they have a very broad.
What is, what, what part of it, it might be a little bit true, but when did they get this idea?
They don't have to do some of the conservation overlay districts, they're excused from having to worry about steep slopes, for example. Steep slopes are good. Well, for them, but you know, so, you know, but there, there, and there's some other of the overlay districts that don't apply in the skiway districts. So that's probably where that comes from.
Okay, okay.
But they do need to follow the site plan regs, the zoning regs.
Right.
So why would they have started building this?
Well, I think the bottom.
Ahead of time, without ever.
I think they probably applied for a permit to do some interior renovations and just.
Well, you know what, the college is famous for doing things that are, and especially in a small town like ours. I mean, it's amazing what they would try to get done unpermitted in Hanover. Where we have building inspectors and they know, we have working relationships with most of their people. So I'm not surprised at all that this would go under the radar as have many other things.
And what does Hanover do about something like this?
Well, Hanover would make them get a, you know, liquor license and we'd have building inspectors and they'd have to put in a building permit. And for this type of thing, the planning board wouldn't necessarily get involved.
Probably zoning board would get involved.
But the zoning, the zoning board would, but not the planning board.
And they would have had to have a building permit to do what they're doing, right?
Oh, absolutely.
And who would have done, approved that?
David.
In Hanover?
David.
Well, David here would do that in Hanover, it would have first gotten a zoning permit. And then it would have gotten, if it needed, planning board approval and then sign off like a building inspector.
So to be fair to the college, the institutional memory that used to be there is really gone. The turnover in all of those offices mean that set procedures are just.
And the select board has acknowledged that, we've reached out to them, we've set up a meeting date to sit down with their folks and go over, here's some history.
Right.
Here's agreements that were made, here's what needs to happen. But this is sort of coming at the same time, sort of on the fringe of that.
I'm guessing, I'm guessing that the impetus for the college for all this is to decrease the revenue. Because they probably lose money on the skiway, they're just trying to figure out how to make more revenue so they don't lose as much money. Not that that matters for what we're doing, but that's probably what they're, I would think what they're trying to do.
Well, I think they're trying to, I see this as being that big a money.
Well, liquor, I mean, you can make a lot of money on liquor and stuff, you know.
I don't know, it's just so far removed, I mean, you make a lot of money if you've got, you know, the Lathan Tavern, but I'm not sure you can outskew it.
Well, if that doesn't matter, what we're talking about is uses.
Right.
And if the college wants to make more money, God bless them, everybody wants to make more money, it seems. So my concern is that, you know, one, are we encouraging a use that we really want in our downtown? And, you know, which we've specifically zoned for restaurants and bar-type uses. And then two, what we may as a planning board think is entirely appropriate guidance for the college may be that we do not have the follow-up here in our small community to make those things happen. So it may be increased police or, you know, somebody making sure they're closed up, I mean, now the, now Wyman is closed up at certain hours. And who oversees that, I mean, we used to have Cynthia Bugnola on Market Street and would report. But there's, you know, so do we have to like rely on neighbor complaints once we've already permitted this thing at the skiway? We find, you know, so what I want from the, you know, and I've already kind of gone through our select board with lighting differences in this community and, you know, from what the planning board said and what actually gets done, to know that the select board is on the same page as we are. And so it really likes specific guidance about what the problem is and what you think the solution is. Because we have the ability in site plan to create conditions that then the applicant would have to follow, you know, for their use of that property in that way. And our conditions are all related around, you know, not impacting the community. So it might be the immediate neighbors or it might be, you know, our local police people have to be out more often and that's going to, you know, create more expense to our community. So it's not just immediately there, but it's broadly the community. If we had drunk people coming down Dorchester Road all the time, that it endangers, you know, the moms in the minivans coming up the hill. So, you know, but given all that stuff, if we're not going to be follow-up with enforcement, it's like, you know, it's not worth our time.
Could we tack on a condition that, that they pay for another officer?
Well, we want to know what our select board is willing to support or not support, because those kinds of follow-up things need to be enforced. And so what if we find they're not paying for their own, you know, police people or somebody at the door doing carding to make sure we don't have underage drinking or, or whatever? So that's my only thing, because I felt as though we were totally unsupportive when Tammy put in all of her runway lighting in the back of the Lathan Tavern. And that's our downtown, it's a historic district and you can see that from everywhere. So I, you know, so that's kind of where I am. The select board needs to tell us what you really want to have happen.
But do we actually know yet what the college was to do?
Well, we don't, I think that that's what we have to.
I think that's step one.
Request is.
Yeah, I think requesting a reverse additive come to. Yeah, I think requesting a reverse additive come to one of, from the skiway. And I'll get from Dina, the skiway manager would probably be the.
That'd be great.
But I think they, I think we should also ask for them to put some, ask them to put something in writing in advance of our meeting so that we can actually.
Well, we need to have like an operations plan from them, so.
I think that would be very helpful. And then the select board is very happy to have that, well, we are going to have a conversation with them about past agreements and going forward. But if we can get this issue resolved, that will help a lot of the other issues, I think.
Is a copy of the building permit something we could look at too?
Sure.
But that doesn't really tell us about the operations. I mean.
It gives you some insight.
It does not give you any insight on that. It's, all it says is that it is, I approved revisions within the.
But you know how big it's gonna be.
Yes, I have, I have the plans.
That gives you insight.
Well, you wouldn't say how many seats or whatever. But, you know, remember, our purview is exterior buildings and we do not control uses. We control impacts of uses. It's the zoning that controls the use. So we're not, you know, we can't go, oh, that they're gonna have a tattoo parlor in there and everyone's gonna get ski tattoos. Well, you know, if that's a customary accessory use, that's David's problem, not our problem. So, you know, we just have to be clear about what our purview is in getting involved in this review. So it's those impacts to the immediate site and to our town in general.
But all of these things provide a little bit of context for what's in mind.
I mean, if you don't like where their bathrooms are compared to.
No, no, that would be.
We're not messing with their layout.
No, no, no.
If it's expanding its use, if it's increasing parking, it's increasing.
How many people are gonna be flying up and down the road?
And, right.
Three beers in.
And I don't believe that there's any kind of limit on the number of events that can be held, not seeing.
Well, it's interesting because I don't see a condition of a limit, but I do see initially that it was very limited to, it was like eight or nine a year of the special ski events. And then like four or five years later, you see them talking about, well, eight or nine events a year at the lodge as they expanded the personal use. And then now we have them saying, you know, well, most events, we've talked about a closing time, but there was never any decision made. So we generally close at eleven, sometimes it goes to twelve. Again, they talked about there would not be any plans for night skiing, which is dangerous. And it's just that then you see there's an event, I mean, that's a huge expansion from eight or nine a year to eight or nine a month and all year long, which it used to be wintertime pretty much.
Yeah, I mean, it used to be like a ski races a year between Dartmouth, Carnival and.
And then you've got, you know, busloads of people. You've got the parking lot that isn't adequate. You've got people in the parking lot, going out every which way. I mean, there are certain places that the select board has taken a stand and will continue to. But also if this board can look at this original permitting and this recent permitting and see where it's perhaps expanded or changed, that's all we're asking for.
And is, David, is this, I mean, I'm looking at the requirements for site plan review, the application requirements and, yeah, they're kind of exterior type things. They're not, you know, they're not dealing with hours of operation or specifically, or specific activities. Is that something that the zoning board would?
No, it would be under site plan, the hours of operation are something that the board would have purview over.
Okay. And then under the hours of operation, then we would be obtaining input from fire and police to.
Highway.
And highway.
Absolutely.
To tell us that, yeah, this is gonna work or this is gonna be a strain on our resources.
With an application, part of the application requirements are input from the select board, input from the police department, fire department, highway department and schools. I think schools are the only one that really could be waived.
So, so we will get more information of what they wanna do if somebody comes to talk to us? Then they would have to fill out a site plan review application, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd be really interested in Ben recusing himself from the select board to tell us, what is it like as a neighbor who has to drive through the skiway a couple times a day? And it doesn't appear to me that the whole circulation plan is a very safe one, especially if you are trying to just use our public road to go, you know, back and forth.
I mean, all those skiers that just ski out and across the road?
Well, I'm, I'm, well, they're, they're those, yes. And, but there's also just so many ins and outs to the parking without really clear signage. And even if there is some signage, I don't think anybody pays any attention about what are entrances and what are exits.
Now, is Scott putting in guardrails?
He is wanting to put in guardrails. That whole project may be delayed because some permits were delayed. And we were hoping to ask the college to help with the guardrails. And that was part of what also brought this issue up because in the past they've had snow fence there and somehow the snow fence got taken down, which was there to protect people from, one, parking on the edge and two, skiing across. So the select board and Scott definitely want guardrails. They've gotta do some culvert replacement and other things. They wanna redo that road. And it's a perfect timing for, the select board also with Sean talking about making one way into the parking lot, one way out of the parking lot. And it won't be an option anymore. It's in, out, no parking on the street. There's still no parking. There have been signs. They seem to disappear with regularity, which we've seen in other places in town as well. So if you disagree with a sign, you take it down, but.
It seemed to happen up by Tim's house recently. I heard the Orford Police get called to that section of the room to investigate the loss of signs.
Wild parties.
Oh, Tim.
I have heard that.
Tim's friends went from Orford.
So one of the things I wanna have clarified also is that I believe that part of the kind of lack of signage or what was going on was to enable emergency vehicles to get in there because I don't know that they can make the sweep in the kind of main entrance.
I had not heard that.
And they, so we need to, I think that was part of why there was that second entrance, like it's just, just before you get to the main, you know, left turn into the lodge area. And to make sure, so I really think that fire needs to be involved with their fire lanes or how they get in for that, because I remember just about that.
But if the parking lot's full and people are still coming and they park on the road now, we're saying they can't park on the road, so what do they do?
They have to go to some other area.
The college would need to locate another area for parking.
Or a bigger parking lot.
They are parking in a traveled lane, which essentially creates a single lane.
Right.
Which means.
So they have to expand the parking lot somehow.
Well, they can arrange to park in Lime Center or, you know, do a shuttle. I mean, they do that all over Hanover when they have big events.
When they have big events, especially the big events.
Yeah, I don't know how often that's, we went to the Ford Sayer race there this year and the parking lot was full.
Yep, yeah.
So I don't know how often that happens.
So they need to accommodate overflow parking, you know, talk to the Lime Center church and.
That is an issue that relates to their permit to operate there. Nobody's trying to put the crunch on them. We're just trying to make it so that it's safe for Lime residents there in a Lime community.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I think the whole thing with the road, I mean.
It's crazy.
As a kid growing up, I mean, we always skied across the road. There was never a fence there and.
Ski patrol gets really pissed if you jump. The road should come.
Oh. But, you know, young kids, they don't, they don't real, I mean, as far as they're concerned, that's part of the skier is.
But if you have either a snow fence or better yet, a guardrail.
Yeah, the snow fence has been great when.
Guardrails stop and see well.
Yes, and the snow fence would too, but it seems to have issues at night, it disappears.
Yeah. Well, and I can, I can certainly attest that, you know, when we got those two snowstorms after the skiway was closed and, you know, I drove up there to just see what the snow looked like and I couldn't believe it. There were, you know, twenty cars parked on the edge of the road and I was going, oh, I don't think the police chief likes this.
No, and you know, neither does the highway crew and neither does anyone that needs.
And the college should have a responsibility to pile their parking lot out.
They have a responsibility, but.
A facility, either that or totally close the thing off.
Kind of low man on the totem pole is my belief. Never stated that, but I think they tend to the in-town, bigger things first.
Sure.
Yeah, it's too far away from Hanover.
So, so where, where do we stand then? Where are we, where are we leaving this? We were asking, I mean, you issued a building permit to them.
Yes, that's for the interior of the new bar.
Yep. Or interior renovations.
Yeah.
But we're calling into question compliance with their existing.
Site plan.
Site plan. And so we would like to have a written narrative and actually have somebody come. But are we, are we then, this would be just a preliminary informational meeting?
I think just, you know, gather some information so that at least you know what their plans are. And then, you know, right now it's kind of up in the air. We don't know anything about what's going on, so we need the college to come in and say, this is what our plans are. This is what we expect. And then the board can look at that and say, okay, this really needs to go to site plan review and we need to review this or this is perfectly fine and this won't cause any problems and no issues. You know, we, at this point in time, I don't think we have enough information to.
Right, no, but it sounds like they'll probably have to do a site plan review. Especially with the market.
I think, especially if they're going to be having more events with more people, I think it's really going to push the parking.
And that's why I think a written narrative is important because that's something that they're gonna have to provide and back up.
Yeah, and something you could ask them for is like, what is the legal occupancy there? I mean, like, so if they have people on the decks and in the building and what is their legal occupancy? Because they're a public building and there is a limit.
It's posted in the lobby.
The permission.
It is.
They have a permit from the town, so I can get that information from Dina.
Whatever, and, you know, and if it's like, I don't know, do they put any kind of limitation when they get a request to use the lodge? I've never heard of, my friends have had weddings there. I've never heard of them, oh, we need to limit the number of people because the skiway said, or the college said, we can only have X number of people. I've never heard that.
No, and I was there for some reunion or whatever. The place was packed.
Yeah.
Standing room only, I mean, there was no.
No, that's, that's how it was when I was there as well. But, you know, so we should know what that is.
Judy, are you saying that they are talking about night skiing?
They are having night skiing.
So we would need to look and see about what lights they have because several times in this nineteen ninety-nine, they say, you know, no lighting beyond the immediate building, not even in the parking lot.
And, and they, yeah, and they've had permission to put additional lighting in the parking lot, which was good. But in two thousand and three, when they were looking for additional lighting in the parking lot, they, that's when they talked about, now we have six to eight events a month. We close somewhere between eleven and midnight. And we have no plans for night skiing, so they still had night. But I think skiing, to me, it's kind of surprising. It's gotten more popular rather than less. And, yeah, if you hike up the hill, even if the chair lifter, the T-bar, whatever you have is not running, you hike up and then you ski down and it's a big thrill. But it's not good practice unless people know you're gonna be there and then you have some kind of safety squad.
Well, people are selling permits for non-lift-based operations, so.
At the skiway?
I'm not sure that skiways.
But in other places.
It's called an uphill pass.
But it's an uphill pass, but it's for a bunch of different ski areas.
So, so it's a thing.
It's a thing.
And when we were kids, it was a thing only because there weren't many lifts and if you wanted to ski, you hiked up, you skied down.
I mean, hike up and take a dining cafeteria trip.
I never did that, but I always had skis, but it was one of the tricks.
One of the things too is to know how many, because I know that during freshman trips, that's become like, you know, the major like center. And then I also, they use it a lot for outing club things, like, you know, so beyond the skiing, how many regularly scheduled college things are happening there now that they've actively programmed the skiway as being the location for that? When the kids do the hike from Hanover to Moose Lock, another setup. And then there was something else. I like ran into Nico McRee. Yeah, it was, was like, you know, and he was a sophomore running something. He was the person in charge of like all these kids there and I forget what it was. And I was like, wow, you know, because this is a nineteen-year-old and there was nobody else there.
The, the other thing is that those buildings on the other side across the street or where the Ford Sayer program is based out of. And that's all high school and younger kids, except that there's a lot of adults in there who are tuning skis and drinking at the same time. So that's another auxiliary building that needs to be part of some kind of plan.
Yes, we should kind of get a plan for there, but.
I'm telling.
Telling tales.
I'm tattling on my peeps.
Well, but.
So it sounds like we wanna have them come. And, and I took a bunch of notes here as people were talking. Some kind of an operational plan, legal occupancy, parking limits, off-site parking, maybe shuttle, lighting. I can give this to David. Number of events per month, freshman trips, scheduled Dartmouth events. And then what about private events like weddings and reunions and that kind of.
Might just take a look at last year's.
Right, exactly.
And that's a good idea.
Look at, that's right, look at last year. Would you expect that to be about the same, increase by twenty percent, increase by fifty percent or, or what? You know, if you, if you had your wish, would you expect this to double or what?
Would we have a planning board meeting up there perhaps?
I think.
You think you might wanna hear first from them?
Yeah.
And then depending on what you think you might wanna do, you might wanna go up and have a look see? Or, or not, depending on what they say?
I'm curious, I was down in Hooks at New Hampshire, at a equipment dealer, you know, four by fours. He said, oh, I was up at the skiway just last weekend. I said, oh, you ski? Oh, no, I don't ski. I, I snowmobile. I snowmobiled over from someplace. So is this on a, because I've been in there when, you know, six or eight snowmobiles will show up and they come in and get lunch, which is, I think, a wonderful thing for them.
I don't know, the Snowmobile Club has trails throughout town. I don't, I've never seen a map of the trails.
Behind Ackerly, there's a trail that comes in and, you know, went out through like.
Parallel to Dorchester.
Yeah, yeah, and I don't know where it goes. I mean, it used to go up Roberts or Klein Road, but I don't know since I don't live there anymore. But that's, you see snowmobile tracks going across Dorchester Road, kind of near where the AT is.
I was wondering if it was kind of near where the AT was.
Yeah, I mean, they're not.
Pretty wide, but yeah.
They're not supposed to be on the AT, but.
No.
But I know it goes like on Ackerly and Gambles, maybe.
I, I, I think as you're saying, Judy, I don't think we're wanting to put them out of business or anything like that. I mean, I think they add a lot to the community and I think if they can do it in a manner of.
Well, we all have to recuse ourselves because we're all users, probably.
Probably the only one who doesn't, but.
So they were there when the lodge was closing, when the skiway was closed?
No, no, in fact, the comment they made was, well, they no longer have food service inside.
Oh, yes.
So they happened to be up the, because I guess the college doesn't, I mean, the college used to have their own staff there, right?
They did for a while and then they subbed it out to different folks. But I think initially it was probably college food, their dining services.
Spicy fries and churros.
So, yes.
I mean, what else?
For, for this. For, for the select board, I think it's more of a question of permitting and conditioning for safety. And security and, okay, if you're having ten events a month and you've got. A thousand people coming and you've got parking for two hundred and fifty, that's your responsibility, tell us how you're gonna do it. And then we'll have our people there, but you have to have your people there, but without, increasingly it's becoming that if it isn't in writing. And it isn't kind of well agreed to and well laid out, it doesn't happen.
Yeah.
And that's just life today.
Yeah.
So, how do we determine, I mean, what's in writing now? Um, I mean, we have a original site plan that somebody referred to and then we have these cases. Where other things got put into writing.
Right, and then the select board has some additional things that were agreed to that. Are, are part of what he was saying, that the, the management has changed so much. That those original agreements that probably are in writing somewhere, but they're not legal documents, there's just, you know. Okay, on weekends, if we have an event, we'll have our guys there and your guys will be there and all those people are gone. And unfortunately, or fortunately, mine still has some of its people still around doing stuff. And they're remembering that there's supposed to be Dartmouth people here. Telling folks where to park and where not to park and come in this way and go out that way and some of those things, so. I think it's just for the select board's point of view, it's time to put all that back in writing. Get together with the powers that be, make sure we're all on the same page and have this board. Look at the site plan conditions and changes of use and make sure that the conditions that would apply through this board are also there.
Right, cause if we do a site plan review, then that's a formal, you know, whatever we agree to, that's formally done, that's all recorded and that's.
Yeah, but it doesn't happen unless it's enforced.
Right, but I mean, at least it's written down formally, yeah.
Definitely have a board that wants to enforce it now, it's gotten to the point, I can't speak to previous boards, but. You know, we, that's important to us and we want. There had been other smaller issues in town where we stepped up and tried to get everybody to say, come on, this is the deal. These are the regulations, this is what we're gonna do, it's a pain, but you've kind of gotta do it. You try and work with people and get everybody to agree and if you can't, you sometimes have to take different action.
Yeah, so safety, when you say safety, that's really the road probably, right, I mean, people getting hit on the road or, you know, car.
Cars getting hit.
Yeah, cars or people.
People, skiers, also I think in this, it's. If people are sitting in their cars, watching the event for three hours and they're drinking the whole three hours that they're sitting in their car. And then they get in their car and they drive home and maybe they're going to Canaan. That could be pretty dangerous.
We've been going through the Tannery, I mean, that is.
The falls are gonna be. Pitch point.
It just seems so large, the, the issues here and we're not.
Been building for a long time.
Yeah, I'm not sure any of us are really capable to tick off all the little programmatic things. That are gonna be involved.
I think you're all capable of following your regulations and sitting down and having the conversation. And looking at where we are compared to where they originally got permitted and then the select board will be theirs. And if we want to, we can have a joint meeting and look at finalizing the bigger plan.
It's gonna be easier than solar power.
I mean, it's not.
So we have.
You have some concrete regulations, yeah.
And they, they concern.
Regulations and definitions are.
Yeah, our site plan covers all those kind of external things. And, you know, they don't have to hide, you know, there are a lot of friends of the skiway, so, I mean, I know of the greens, I volunteered to help with parking. It may be that they have volunteer people help with parking on the big event days or, um, but. You know, another thing about it is with the parking is that the emergency vehicle access has got to be left open. So ambulances can get in, the fire department can get in with a truck if they needed to, so, and I know that that's not. Not yet clear.
Yeah, but to an extent, that's, that's part of what happens in every skiway or every ski resort.
Problem and they're not attending to it and they need to manage it according to our agreement about where their emergency services.
If it's a, if it's a snowstorm and the plow can't get through, they can only do one lane.
Yeah, I mean, if we don't.
Is liable for that.
If we don't allow anybody to park on the road, which I guess we, John, so we can't, that should solve.
State law.
Right, so if nobody parks on the road, then that would allow emergency vehicles and then they could, so that would solve the problem.
The problem is, is no definite definition of where the parking lot ends and the road begins.
Well, that would be easy to do.
Oh, it would be very easy to do, I think guardrails would solve that problem.
I am totally, and so Scott, we're all in favor of guardrails, but, um.
College should pay for it.
Can we get the nice kind that are wooden, like they have at the national parks rather than the curved steel ones?
Um, I don't know.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, the kind, well, they.
And then they get to be a hazard.
Well, they're, they're strong enough that some of those national park buses are gonna be going through them, which is not a whole lot more than what we would have here, but. It just seems like rather than institutionalizing it to kind of keep that rustic feeling about the skiway. To have it be wooden and maybe they do this.
I think it's a little more difficult to put them in though, because they have.
Well, probably our guys can put them in.
Yeah, but it, it, you know.
I have no idea if the park service uses them.
Right, I agree with you, but I think.
Going to the Sun Highway, I mean.
That would be very cool.
Yeah, cause the, the steel ones do it, what you're saying, a little institutionalized, yeah. So how do we, how do we move this forward?
Maybe it's gonna.
So, well, your, next week I'll write a letter to the skiway manager. Asking for a narrative with all the things that the board's talked about, um, and then meet with the board. And I'll pass it through you, Rich.
Sure.
And probably have you sign it to the, the chairman of the board.
Oh, okay.
They don't know where to go.
And, and why aren't they, why are they doing this?
Dana, Dana will, can give you his name.
Yeah, that's what I figured.
That would be great and then, um, we've got a meeting set up with them coming up sometime in the next couple of weeks as well.
Would it be useful to have like Richard, a member of the planning board, come? Be there to understand.
Is it a public meeting?
Um, you know, I'm not sure.
We'll figure that out and just extend the invitation if it's appropriate, because it might help.
Many years might just have interesting, helpful perspective.
Yeah.
Sometimes when they, when the attorneys are involved, it becomes non-public.
Yeah, well, that's fine, I'm just asking.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good, good suggestion.
Well, we're working together to try to solve the problem, it seems like we should know all the nuances and so we're not like. Going against what you guys want just because there's a majority of us that see it a different way or something and.
We're not doing that.
Well, I, I know, but things like that.
Unknowingly, if we don't, we understand a lot.
Uh, Judy will be here at meetings.
What?
Judy will be here at meetings.
I know.
So keep us straight.
But, uh, I, that's a good suggestion and I'll see what, we meet next Thursday, I'll see what they want to do.
Okay.
And I will let you know, um.
Can you get Bender give us a report about what it's like going through, I mean, just as not a select board member, but, you know, or, you know, or Dana, or, you know.
Yeah, Dana has said sometimes it's, she's the one that's commented on it the most.
Yep.
It's really a challenge.
Well, if you get that to come in to us, just so we can, you know, cause we can only imagine most, you know, I go in and park.
That far and then you come back.
All the way out and I don't have to come down the hill through the skiway when it's operating.
Jeff Valles could tell us too.
Yep, yeah.
I don't know, Dana comments quite often when snowing, coming down through there.
It's a challenge.
Is a challenge because you have to creep, because you don't know what else, what people are going to be doing and if their car is parked in the road. Um, you know, it's one way and you're trying to.
Don't let people come down Dorchester Road way too fast, they hop that guardrail at the fall, falls quite regularly.
Well, I will say coming down, you know, that Canaan Turnpike through the skiway, I mean, it, you go from dirt to pave, right? And, oh, you know, it's, it's way different and the other thing is just, yeah, it's disorienting too when it opens up. From after you've been in the trees and, you know, there needs to be, I know signage doesn't work, but maybe a blinky light or something. That would get people's attention to slow down.
Yeah, and well, I know Scott really wants to work on that road, so.
One of those epilepsy inducing crossroads.
Well, I don't like them at all, but I do believe that they get the driver's attention.
I think they really, they really do, when I drive through Hanover, you see a couple of different versions and then if you go to the hospital and you see yet. Another couple of versions and they really do, you know where you're going, you think you're paying attention and there's this. Blinky thing and you.
I know the stoplight that, that blinks.
Yeah, I like that.
I know, hey, you stupid, stop.
Yeah, so anyway, we showed.
So can we move on to?
Yes.
Housing chapter discussions?
I kind of, um, I, I printed out copies of.
Yeah, thank you very much, I'm so sorry it was so late, but my computer died.
Please, because underneath are two emails from David Robey that he asked me to pass on to the board, so that's why I.
So what I did was I used the basis of our conversation to amend what our goals and strategies were. And a lot of our conversation actually ended up into the NBs, either in things that we've gotta do or things we shouldn't forget to do. For the narrative and, um, so I don't know if anybody got a chance to look at this.
Did you get put their two emails?
But I did not get to see David Robey's.
But you want this NB?
Note and, it's a, it's a, it's a Latin term, please take notice or, or look at this closely.
Like good.
Know well, know well, that's, that's.
Well, I was looking for some of these initials and I didn't match up.
No, 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 okay, so David says we don't need a mask, we don't need a master plan chapter.
Right.
Okay. Oh, oh, he wants to go as a vacation too.
I never said that, I just want the board to meet less often.
Yeah, I know, it's the vacation.
Okay, I joined within just the right time.
Oh, yes, well, we're not doing the agricultural soils conservation district again unless John comes back.
Unless who comes back?
John, John Stadler, because he was, he was like right on top of that one.
Alright.
Well, these are good comments.
And, and in fact, David brings up an interesting point that I was gonna ask about these goals.
Yes.
I like how we are iterating on these goals, this is really good. I wanna think about the other end of it, what, what, we talked about how, about sending this out to the town somehow. Um, is it, is this a, a good time to talk about? How these would get stated and how these would be presented? To help shape the words of these goals. Because, I mean, what I, what I fear is we work really hard and come up with a bunch, a bunch of goals that we say, yeah, these are. These are good. And then we spend two meetings or three meetings figuring out how do we tell the town? What these are and so I was, I don't know if this is a useful question to ask today. Or whether to put it off, but, okay, so, we have a piece of paper. At some point we'll have a piece of paper that's got really good words on it, we're, we're pretty, either. We're all nodding our heads or a bunch of us are saying, no, and a bunch of people are saying, you know, but this is the time to get the town involved.
Yep.
How do we get the town involved, how do we wanna do that?
Do another mailing as we did with the solar, every box holder, I mean, I think if you took out all the red stuff. You could get this down to a page or a page and a half, and we've got Hebe who does like the great magic stuff.
Don't always pick on Hebe, I mean, this too, she's really good, but, you know, she doesn't.
Things like fit on pages and, and read well and all that and I would say, here's what we're thinking about, uh, for our strategy for addressing. Housing in this town, how do you feel about these things?
Excuse me, it's not a questionnaire.
No, we want them to respond to these ideas.
Yeah.
These goals, the vision that we have and then some ways to get to that vision. And, and I, I feel like if we can't get agreement amongst the people around this table and if. We shouldn't go writing a big housing chapter because it could be like not what the town wants at all. So that, so this is, I think, just a different approach to, uh, uh, a way to get input. Here's some goals and strategies, what are the goals do we need, do you like, what, what do you think about this goal, that goal and are you thinking of other strategies? And, and note in the cover letter, we still need to think about implementation. How will we assist people in creating accessory dwelling units? Um, you know, we want your ideas and that's, that's as far as I wanna go with this. And everything in red would not go out to people, these are just notes for us, includes a lot of, you know, cause you had the empty nesters. The, um.
Downslizers and.
Yeah, the young, young, young professionals, that, those are all housing types we're gonna need to address in our narrative and think about. Ultimately, when we come to do regulation changes, but I don't think we need to bring that in right now. For like strategy, cause our strategy is have more housing units. For, and we have more housing units for a diverse group of people, but we don't have to enumerate exactly who those people are. Maybe we find that, everyone says, yeah, we need to have housing for immigrants. Okay, fine, we'll put that in our narrative if that's a suggestion that comes, but it's, you know, we don't need to identify who it's for now.
So what I try to do is take data and make information and then the information leads to action. So it's a chain there and so that's what we're just trying to work down.
We're doing vision, kind of general ways to do it and then specifically what are our actions going to be in our town, so.
And I think, I think that the high level stuff is where, where we are right now.
That's all we're doing.
Which is very good, I think that when we, we need to digest this, I don't think we're all like conversant with these. These topics yet, so it's not, I mean, maybe go to the town in the summer sometime.
Well, after the summer, because people aren't paying attention, but yeah, September, the two mailings in September.
Um, but I think that when we do, it, having a foot here and then a foot, looking at the regulations and thinking. Okay, what would it mean to try to tweak the regulations to meet this goal? I mean, would we change lot coverage a little bit here and not here and keep these runs? Preserve this, allow for this, you know, a barn could be converted more quickly, you know, those kinds of.
Let's not put in some of the conversion stuff, we talked about some of the challenges.
Being, um, some people in the audience are gonna need those concrete details to understand. The implications of the strategy and bigger goals.
Okay, I'm not, I, I personally don't wanna posit those things because I believe that there are lots of different ways to skin the cat. And if a person is particularly turned off by barns getting converted to non-barn use, I don't wanna alienate them. Into thinking that we don't need more smaller, you know, dwelling units or accessory dwelling units, you know. People can have them already.
Well, I mean, I mean, make it up then, but be, have some kind of concrete example of how a change would allow for. A, a modest increase in the ADUs.
Okay, well, I, I, yeah, okay, we would, that, good. Summarizing that into something small, um, the only way I can think that that would be, you know, like a really good thing is if we could get. A, um, graphic, something visual that, you know, we could say, oh, you know, so. Maybe one approach would be this for implementing that strategy rather than more words, so. Maybe we can think about what would, you know, one way to do this could be like that, you know, something that just speaks without words. To describe or how to implement a strategy.
Or perhaps a case study.
But I don't think we wanna get in talking about zoning changes.
We're gonna have to at some point.
I understand, but we need to have people buy into what we're trying to do. I mean, I'm not trying to change the zoning ordinance personally, what I'm trying to do is create more opportunity for housing. That, and if we can get buy-in for people of that, I mean, David Robey, I don't think he thinks we need more housing.
No, doesn't sound like.
No, and there, maybe people around this table who feel the exact same way, um, and I think what. Um, and I think what, one thing that's really compelling is the information that we have from the school superintendent that said, actually, yeah, we do have a little bit of wiggle room for growth. And I, I really think that if anything, that would be like a separate thing to say, oh, did you know that actually we do have some wiggle room? And that, um, you know, allowing for modest growth, um, it seems to have been working in our community, and we have this amount of capacity. So don't be thinking that we're gonna need to add on to the school because of that policy. Although, who knows, maybe the school is wanting to expand anyway, I mean, that's the other thing.
You know, I mean, there are a few parents that I talk to, they all say, we like the school. The school is good because it's small, it's the size it is, and they, they really are negative about increasing the size of the school.
Yep.
Well, I mean, we're not talking about doing anything except what's within the historic variation.
Yeah, like thirty kids.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, there's one classroom worth of wiggle.
Right.
Yeah.
And then we have to figure, as we said, we have to figure, or David, I guess, is gonna figure how many, how many units are being built now every year, so then we figure all that in.
And then we need somebody who can take a look at the number of units that we've had permitted, and compare that with the, the school population, kind of in those, it, it, actually, it's a little bit like time, give two or three year lag time to see if we're getting bumps in the school population. Like if there's one year where we get six units permitted, and two or three years later, we get a big bump. I mean, it, you know, we can't say that that's exactly causal, but it's, you know, we're seeing that that's happening.
Put something in the water.
But, you know, we, we have to, I think, with the best we know about school, I mean, and, and maybe there is no relationship between population growth in our community and the school population.
I think there is.
Okay, well, what we need to do is we need to understand that better.
I mean, we can go back and look at that.
Well, that's exactly what I'm saying.
Well, we don't even need the, we don't even need the, the housing information, we can, we can look at the population.
The school population in the late eighteen, nineteen eighties, nineteen eighties was two twenty.
Yep, yeah.
And we're down.
Yep.
We have population records and school population.
But this, you know, the population growth has been steady through that period and since then. And the school age population is still below what it was at its historic peak. So, I mean, people are having fewer kids.
And there are more people moving into towns.
There are people moving into town, aren't there?
Yeah, right, so, but what we need to do is to document that, so that if we put more housing units in this community, we're not gonna automatically get a huge increase in our school population, I mean, which is a huge fear.
But Vicki, I did talk to John, Dr. Ward, because I mentioned to him that Jeff Valance had said, you know, years back, and he had people waiting, and John said to me, I do too.
Yeah.
He said, I have people that talk to me about trying to get their kids into the school.
What about buying Mary Lou Robinson's house? And that's been on the market, isn't that common?
The greenhouse, two downs in the school.
Yeah, that's been on the market for like eight or nine months, it's.
Well, Paul Small told me, or told me, that the reason it isn't selling is because it needs so much work.
Yeah, they're asking six fifty, and it needs a quarter million dollars.
So it's, it's money, which is the same problem that it is ever.
Right, right.
So, you know, so there is a date, I do have a data point, um, we did, we had a lot of research done that talks about the number of kids that go into a school system based on unit size. Would that be helpful for me to dig that out? Because basically it said, smaller units tend not to have as many kids or even any kids.
Smaller sized houses.
Smaller sized units, yes.
Yeah.
Dwelling units.
Dwelling units, yes.
I wonder if it would be, I mean, see, I, all the statewide stuff, I am very suspect. And so I assume it's statewide, and because our housing stock is way different than, than, you know, Lebanon even, in terms of composition. So, I mean, that's interesting for the state, and I know that they can, but I don't think it's appropriate for here as a, you know, to use in modeling. And the best thing to do would be to sit down and go, hey, what's the school population of each of these homes? And how many bedrooms are there? I mean, that would, you know, it's a tedious task.
I mean, in a, in a way, Vicki, we're trying to go, we're trying to get these workforce housing, affordable housing, missing middle housing, et cetera. That group of people are gonna be looking at smaller units and bringing more kids. So, you know, quite possibly.
I mean, I could be eligible for affordable housing, you know. You know, a single person who doesn't have kids can still be in an income range where they are eligible for subsidized housing or affordable housing, you know.
Okay, well, my, my point was gonna be, I mean, can we look at what Hannover's done in terms of all the units it's been bringing in? And what is it, what has it done to their school population? I mean, because we're going to be sort of looking for a similar population, isn't that right?
I think they're so big though compared to us, that's the thing.
Puppies, maybe.
You know, it's got like, if you don't count the students, it's got like.
Twelve thousand.
That's with students.
No, I think, I thought it was ten or twelve without the students.
Twelve, twelve.
But also, their affordable housing isn't really affordable. I mean, it's a, um.
Right, yeah.
I mean, look at the stuff out by the hitch, or the.
Yeah, 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 the, yeah, Kyle Hill.
Kyle Hill.
Oh, yeah, the Red Circle.
Well, how, I mean, are we, but all the stuff on Mount Support Road is, you know, that's relatively small units.
Isn't it in Lebanon?
That's Lebanon.
That's.
All right, all right, so we can look at Lebanon then, we can look at, we can look at.
But I think one thing we have to, I was gonna say, one thing we have to remember, or at least factor in, I think, with Line, and why we're a little different, because we have this great school, and we pay to send the kids to Hannover, Thetford. There are people just, you know, as we know, dying to get in, get their kids into Line. Whereas Orford, people are leaving. So whatever how, I mean, we have to factor it in anyway, whatever housing we have, I think, will definitely maybe increase the kids a little bit more than other towns.
Size and demographically, we could learn probably from Thetford and Norwich. Even though it's, I mean, just because it's a different state doesn't mean the people, I mean, the right, it's the right size to look at.
Well, you know, if we really want to look at kids per household, why don't we just look here? I mean, I don't know that they, that they have any better numbers than, you know, we do, I mean, I don't know, it, it just.
You'd have more confidence if it was similar to here, that, that what we're seeing here is not just a fluke.
No, I know that housing in Thetford's a lot less expensive than Line.
Norwich is not.
How do we, how do we know that we have any ability to influence this? I mean, uh.
That's a good question.
You know, knowing how much it costs to build and, um, you know, my sense is that to build individual homes is probably never gonna be affordable to, you know, this, this other demographic, you know, the attainable, affordable, or workforce housing. But without water and sewer system, you know, municipal water and sewer, do we know that, that anybody could ever, um, afford to build something that would meet the criteria that we're, we're trying to come up with? I mean, it, it seems like it, it, it can't be a for-profit or a private individual. It'd have to be a Twin Pines or something like that. I mean, would we want to talk to Twin Pines to see what their, you know, what their experience would be? I mean, and whether they would even.
Well, okay, so they, they have done projects in Hannover, where the town has given the land and done all the site work, done, you know, waved the utility hookups, and, you know, on water and sewer. So, and then, you know, they did that one right across from the high school, and they were really struggling to get it to be, because when you get subsidy money, you need to keep the unit cost below a certain amount. They had a very hard time making that budget. And then the solar was put on as a gift, kind of, it wasn't part of the project. So they made a, you know, very tight building envelope, but the town did all that work, and then using federal funds, it could be, you know, done as an affordable housing project. So that's how much commitment, large community you have to put in.
The fellow who built the apartment complex next to Chapman's in Bentley. There's a very interesting breakdown of all the pieces, and the money that he had to get from the state.
Right.
And how the money that from the state tends to favor the big ones, rather than the little mainstream kind of things.
And we're looking for that size, that scale is very appropriate for our town.
He has eight, he has eight units.
Is that right? In the nineteen eighties, Line had an affordable housing commission. And frustratingly, they looked and looked, they had money, they had seed money. They could not find a piece of land on which what they were going to do. They had some architectural developed drawings to make little cluster semi-villages. And they just never could get a piece of land that was the right price. And that, I think, would continue to be an issue today. If you were gonna go that way, if you were gonna go, one of the things Hammer did early on, I think, was to really step up to the accessory dwelling unit sort of function. And someone has a garage, or a bigger than a shed, but smaller than a carriage house, where you could take the second floor and develop it into an apartment. And that creates some nice entry level. They're usually fairly small, but they don't impact as, as development does to the community.
Yeah.
And I think Line has a smattering of those around.
Well, you guys have one, your house.
We have one, yeah.
How did you guys do yours?
Cleverly, it was there when we bought the house.
Oh, it was, okay, so what's, so.
Very minimal, it was, our house was a summer house, it was a summer, uh, kind of a little apartment. And we spent a bunch of money over the years making it better and better.
Yeah, I just wondered, as you, as how, you know, homeowners, how do you decide, okay, we're gonna invest in creating a unit on our property, and that's our, like, vacation money, or, you know, arduous roof, or whatever? How do you make that, that first loop?
But the first step in line, so you have to hook up to septic and well.
Or you can have a, if it's detached, you can have a separate system, separate, separate system.
But you still have.
Back then, back then, you couldn't, you had to get attached.
I think now, can't you do it if you.
Yeah.
You can have a.
But it's, it's still. It is expensive, all of that, those first steps are expensive. And what that does then is, and we've always figured, we want to choose who's gonna be living in our backyard ten feet out our back door.
Right.
So we've kept the rent low, and we've held some single moms and some other folks who needed the place, which we felt good about. But, um, if we tried to recoup all the money we put into it, we would have had to charge the going rate that Hannover charges. And then you haven't, you haven't made a affordable housing.
Right.
So it's, it's really a very, very difficult thing to do.
But, but I think ADUs are a good way to go, I mean.
And people like them because they feel like they have their own little quasi-house, and somebody else is taking care of a lot of maintenance and shovel.
Or an older couple that wants to downsize, they can build an ADU and move into that and rent their house, or whatever.
Then they could build what they wanted.
So, so the, the line regs were, wondering for ADUs, was, when was that enabling stuff written?
When the zoning was written.
Originally?
Yeah, that was eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine.
But then there was stuff modifications.
Then it was modified by the, well, the state.
That was like four years ago?
Yeah, and I was just wondering if we could look and see back over time, how many we're getting in each.
Was there any bump once the regs changed?
So.
Of course, that was during COVID, right?
So maybe one of the.
No, it was before COVID.
But we're still, you know, I only, um, I've done more recently this, uh, you know, as of, in the, the last year, I can think of one, um, that was, I, I can think of two now, and then there's one pending, I'm just waiting for a permit application. They just got the septic approved for it.
For ADU?
Yeah.
Are they detached, you remember, you're all detached?
Yeah, all detached.
So a separate little house, right?
Yeah, so.
So, so one, one strategy we could look at is targeting some loosening expansion just to make those a little bit easier, without, and it wouldn't be an enormous change, but it would enable more people to perhaps afford it, make them be a, a small, a little bit bigger than is currently allowed.
It's interesting, if you look at the, the zoning, there are two ways of, if you have an existing building that you're putting into ADU in, you can do a conversion, and the conversion does not limit you to the seven hundred and fifty.
Right.
It's only when you do an ADU.
Oh, one from scratch.
Right, so, um, in many cases, you know, the ones I've been doing, they've been doing conversions and able to go a little larger than, so the, the, the size, other than building from scratch.
Right.
Um, the size can be.
Yeah, so, but maybe you could scratch one a little bit bigger.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you might in the next few months have to allow for two.
Right, that's right.
So buildings from scratch would be all detached?
No.
No, you can do a.
No, an attached.
You could add a garage with a.
Oh, I see, I'm thinking instant, but attached, could be any size at all, right?
Right, yeah.
So it doesn't sound like we have really any impediments.
The, the, well, the real, if you want to build mother-in-law cups.
Right.
Then you're limited to seven hundred and fifty square feet, because you're starting from scratch.
Right.
Um, but if you're attaching it or building in an existing building, then you're allowed a larger.
Right, so if you took the whole second story, second floor of the house and turned that in, yeah.
Yep.
Just put a kitchen up there.
I will say that the other constraint that came out of this lecture that the guy gave at the Kilton Library a bunch of years ago, he wrote the book about ADUs, is owner occupied.
Yep.
Is a, is a serious impediment, because you can't borrow money to build it. Because the bank says, well, if we wind up owning it, do we have to live there? And so that, that's another constraint, that's all I say.
But interestingly, if you look at, uh, well, Hannover, but Woodstock, passing those regulations now, that they're, they're not ADUs, they are small rentals that are Airbnb or whatever, with all the problems those are being created with the, um, absent owner or landlord.
Right.
So that's the flip side, which I think it's, you can certainly have regulations that counter it either way, I think, that would take care of that, but owner occupied, yeah, someone has to be in charge. And in a community like we live in, if you're not careful, you can have a lot of community disturbance by absentee landlords, or they, they're not giving the disturbance the occupants are.
Right, yeah, you have COGS, you can just rent the COGS kids, you know, build things.
We've got no limitation on how many could be in a house here. You could have, you know, across the street from me, I could have twenty college kids living in the house there. You know, because we don't limit the number of unrelated people that can live in a, a single dwelling unit. And, you know, I think.
Which Hannover does.
Hannover has been doing that, yeah, it's, it's loosened in one district, but yes, we've been doing that, or.
Having lived across the street.
Yeah.
I can tell you, it's, it's a big disturbance to your neighborhood.
Yes.
When that happens.
Well, how about, I mean.
But we all remember when we were that age, and we thought we were angels, you know.
Yeah, it was great fun, wasn't it?
There have been whole neighborhoods in many college communities that have been blown out because they've been bought up by investors who rent them out for the football weekends, and then the places are vacant the rest of the year. So there's no more trick or treating in that neighborhood, and there's, you know, opportunity for crimes, since there are no eyes on the street, and, you know, it's, it's a hole in your community. And honestly, we do not need to have more of our housing stock being used, you know, for short-term rentals.
Or second homes.
Year-round home, you know, year-round housing for people to work in upper-valued businesses. And keep our economy going. And keep our economy going.
Where, where do we see ourselves going on, on this draft? You've, you've got some comments.
People don't want, yeah, from David, but I think, I don't think that there's anything here. I mean, there's some of, it seems like we should fill in the XX on that first one. And, um, it, I don't know how, I mean, to Rich's point about, or, you know, Hebe's about, well, how would you actually put examples in here that would be non-controversial and not turn somebody off to that strategy? And, um, and I think tinkering with zoning, you know, some people are like, oh, zoning, you know? Um, and that turns them off immediately when you say zoning. So we have to have like something that's concrete. Um, not talking about zoning, but, you know, say, for example, you could put two units, you know, two extra units on your lot rather than three or, you know, something like that. I mean, you have to have something concrete that is non-zoning. So if you wanted to think about how you would have an example, um, not necessarily that we're recommending it as an action, but here's an example of a way it could be done. Because I, I really want this to stimulate, okay, well, how do you think we could achieve this? How, you know, how, how, you know, what, here's a strategy. What would be the actions or ways that, you know, not, I don't want to use the word implementation, but how could our town do this? You know, and leave it open-ended so we get people's ideas.
But that would be pitting down a changing, or.
They would be suggesting. You don't know that. They might say, oh, um, you know, I'll put in two units on this vacant lot that I have. I mean, maybe that's that one person's idea about how to do it, not changing zoning. You know?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, so, you know, so we get from that, you know, individual initiatives to use their vacant lots, you know? And, and maybe that would be, you know, how do we get in touch with these people who want to create affordable housing or, or whatever? So it, it doesn't all come down to zoning changes in, in my view. But, that, you know, and that's all I wanted to do. I don't really feel like writing, researching, doing anything else unless what we have is a list of goals and strategies that's, you know, that has been tested on our community, because I think it'll be a waste of time.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, and, you know, the tiny bit that I know about sales is that people buy into something because they have a problem.
Right.
Um, if they don't have a problem, you can give them the biggest discount in the world.
Right.
I have a grater. I give you a ninety percent discount on this grater, Vicki, and you can have it for only twenty-five thousand dollars.
No, I say, I, I don't break cheese.
But I don't want it, yes. And so, I mean, this is, it's the same problem with here that, that we have to find out what the town's appetite is for change, um, you know, and I think.
I'm not even saying change. What I want to know is, what is your vision about housing? It might not be change. It might be, we want it the same as it is, okay? So let's just say, what is your vision for housing and how do you want to get there? And maybe we don't change, you know, somebody's going to respond, we don't change a thing. David Robey's saying, we don't have a problem. And so there's going to be some number of people that, you know, we don't have a problem. But, and, and I, I, I feel like the fact that we don't have a housing chapter doesn't mean we shouldn't have a housing chapter. I think we do need to have a housing chapter. And I do think our community deserves to be engaged in that discussion. And it may not come out as we think it is, and we need to be listening. Now, I put at the end that we need to get opinions. The housing chapter wants to incorporate the opinions of Lyme residents. So that's the very last word there. And I know who suggested that on, you know, the first round of inputs. And so our first.
Is that goal number eight? I don't know.
It's not a goal number eight, it's just like, that is going to be the overriding thing about this. And so we can't go into it with preconceived notions. I mean, it may be that we need to invite the regional planning commission to tell us about housing. There's that housing breakfast coming up that Vital.
Into this one?
Yes, that Vital Communities puts on. And that's a great thing. And if everybody in town went to that, they'd be convinced that there's probably a housing problem. So how can we, you know, schedule, make it up an event with some interesting speakers that would, um, be Zoom things? People could sit at home, drink beer, watch, and, um, or could come and, you know, interact.
Detect a theme.
Yeah, yeah. Um, well, actually, after our.
You could go over to the ski way.
Yeah, right.
On a big, on a big, maybe they had a big TV. They should have a big theater or something. We're going to have a hosting event.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe they'll host.
That's what's habitual about, yeah. But I think it'd be really good to have, like, an event that brought some outside people who are not from Manchester, but who, you know, work in Lebanon or whatever, and.
A housing fair, sorry, sorry.
Well, yeah, no.
Affairs on the road.
No, no more fairs.
But, you know, just to say, here's the state of, you know, and giving the kind of synopsis, you know, like five-minute synopsis about the housing market in the Upper Valley. And, you know, houses are, you know, staying on the market two days compared to three days last year. You know, that kind of thing, just to show how tight it is or to document how expensive it is. I mean, that's just like a great, you know, really condensed summary. And if we could do that to paint a picture and then get people to respond to this, um, to, we all have a common understanding about the Upper Valley housing market, then I think, you know, we would have educated and then hopefully that's been put here. So that is what I was hoping for.
There are some of those videos that are connected to the online versions of, say, Keys to the Valley.
Yep.
Or the, uh, Upper Valley Lake Centipede.
Yep.
And, you know, would it be worth, like, putting some links to those on the listserv?
Absolutely, but, you know, you're going to have to put a gun to my head if I'm going to watch them.
Well, I think, I think there might be some people who, who do want to watch.
Oh, well, I, okay, I think that'd be a great idea. And if you could choose your best ones, we've got to serve, like, big refreshments, not beer, but have a little, you know, have an event with good, good yummy things to eat so people come. And, um, but I think, yeah, why don't, you know, if you can find ones that you watched and would go, this is a really good one.
Well, I can find one that was informative.
Yeah, that's, that's.
You know, that was basically talking about.
That'd be good.
The problem as, as really not just an Upper Valley problem, but a national problem. I think that's what, I think that's what people really need to get. Is that this is not unique to us, we're not being picked on. This is actually a, a, a very broad problem.
Well, maybe what we could do is a, um, like a listserv post once a month. You know, we're gearing up for our housing thing in September. You may want to look at this video, like, you know, in, in June. And then in July, you know, you may want to look at this other video, you know, kind of tease them along. And, but, and, and then all those times also say, by the way, you know, we're going to be looking for your ideas and we're having this event in September. So we, I think, at our next meeting, need to, like, figure out when that should be and who we can invite. The Common B Live Talking Heads, uh, but, you know, personal people and, um, who are knowledgeable and can help us at least kick it off. And then maybe even facilitate. I mean, we might want people to respond to this. And they go, oh, we don't really want to have eighty more units of housing between now and, you know, wherever they go. And we go, okay, fine, that's not your vision, how many do you think would be appropriate or something?
Do you, do you think we should do that before we ask for input or after?
I think, what, the links to the housing?
Or the, or the, the gathering, you know, the donuts and everything.
I don't think we're going to get anybody to come unless we have, like, they're not going to come and hear us. And they're not going to come just for donuts. So I think they might come if we had, like, you know, people in the field, but not us, who would be willing to talk.
Sure. But if we did put that together, would we want to do it before they gave their input? Ideally, I would say yes.
And then we would release this and give this to them. And we would also do a mailing and they can vote twice if they need to.
Right.
Um, you know, we just want. I, I mean, I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there.
I like that.
Sure, no, I think it's good.
Yeah, so can you research, like, a video link that we could, you know, uh, put out there on, uh, listserv? And explain, we're not allowed to do listserv or, or.
I can send stuff out on behalf of the, so if you write up what you want to say.
Yep, yep, okay, great.
My word smithing is not great, so I prefer somebody else.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I guess I'm hard of the, I, I just really struggle to understand how we can make a, a bit of difference without changing the community, you know, the, the look and feel of the community somehow.
Well, if you're saying we're not, we can't change anything, we can't change anything, then we can't change anything. But we're getting our community at least talking. And hopefully, individuals are possibly learning that they could have an ADU. Oh, I never knew I could have an ADU. And they're telling us where they would, I mean, they've already told us, but they're telling us again that the village or the commercial district would be the appropriate place, because we did ask before about that. And you are right in that we, the planning board, are not doing development, we cannot change it. What we want to do is, if there is going to be development, that we are guiding it to the place that the people in our community want it and at the scale that they want it.
Right.
And that, um, you know, that's.
So there's, I mean, there's things like, there's some barns around that are, like, falling down. If they could be converted to ADUs or three units, that, I mean, and you bring the barn back and you have some affordable housing, I think, you know, that, that's, that's. If you have a, just a small, like, four small things like that would make our, like, next four years' worth of affordable housing that we're trying to add. So, I mean, it's just a small, but it's true.
I understand, but I, I just think that, that unless, that, that with the, the free market forces are never going to provide.
The market's never going to potentially sell.
Affordable housing, they're just never going to happen.
But there are, there are probably some forms of development that are completely dependent on that. But there might be other forms that are not, like ADUs, that are not dependent on.
Right.
On the, you know, the price of land or the price of construction.
Right.
You know, so, so that's going to be a bottleneck for some avenues, there's no question. And, and we probably won't figure out, no matter how much zoning change we make, we're still not going to be able to, you know, make up for four, five hundred thousand dollars.
The foundation is certainly a billion-dollar corporation.
I mean, I think, I, I happen to think the ADU thing is a wonderful idea. It's just when you get into the nitty-gritty. Judy, you mentioned you want to know who you're.
You're right.
Who's, who you're co-living, habitating with ten feet or twenty feet away. And, and I think that the stumbling block is that, you know, once you start down that road, you're, you're a landlord.
Yeah.
And, and.
But I don't think we have to worry about those problems for other people. We just, if we can re- remove some barriers, enough small barriers so that, and still control, not in a bad way, but, you know, in a harmonious way for the community.
I think what you're trying to do is just provide the opportunity. You're not, you, you can't force people to do it, but you're providing opportunities for.
But it feels to me like we already have the opportunity, I guess that's what.
Yeah, I would agree with you. I think the opportunity is there, but the unfortunate thing is that it's, it's costly.
Right.
The other, the other thing is, I think that the vast majority of people in town don't have a clue what the zoning is. And they just, a lot of people say, oh, the Lyme zoning doesn't let us do anything, we can't do anything. So I think it is important, as Vicki was saying, to educate people what the zoning actually is. You know, to say, well, you can do this, did you know you can do an AD, you know, and how you do an ADU? I think that's a good, good thing to do.
Well, maybe we, we do a little role-play thing, um, you know, uh, Tim, you know, you live, you live in a large house with lots of acreage and you've got plenty of parking. And so you could pretend, I want to get an ADU. And you go and talk to David. David, you know, just as a little role-play in our event, how would I go about this? And then David could say, well, oh, you know, well, we have this thing called an accessory dwelling unit. And, you know, you could have your caregiver or your, um, you know, your kids, you know, your son and, and, and his new wife move in or, you know, we really love going to the college and we'd love to have a, you know, French-speaking foreign exchange student here or something, you know? But any, you know, how would I go about getting that extra thing in my, and, and, you know, David could, like, walk through, oh, and Tim, you know, what's your septic system built for? How many, how, you know, how many bedrooms?
On top of that, his barn has got water and light.
Right, 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 right. But maybe you do.
Tim, you're in trouble.
But we.
Maybe we could do like a little.
But in general.
But I'm, I'm just saying that that role-play.
Well, the plan I'm going to give you tonight for the site plan review that I gave you, the application, I finally got the full plans. Uh, he would actually like to put two, um, units in his barn, but can't because the zoning prohibited.
So he needs a variance?
Oh, he would need a variance. I don't think he's willing to go that far, um, you know, but.
Well, he can just, uh, put in the one and save the space for the second one.
I think that's what he's doing, is going to wait five years and then.
Dave, is this the breakfast on the.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
So, you know, there was a, basically a unit that we lost, um, for the next five years.
But he can't do it because of the size.
Because he doesn't have, uh.
Water.
Sanitary in the, the barn currently, so.
Oh, he has to wait.
He has to wait five years and he can only do one.
And that's a tweak that could speed things up.
You know, if you allow two, three in.
So we could change that.
Yeah, so those are things that, you know, that could have some effect on the.
Maybe we don't, I mean, for something like that, it's, uh, we could just go ahead and do that for next March before all this gets codified or, you know, or our plan gets done. Because I think everyone thinks that accessory dwelling units are a very good thing to do. But, you know, we're reviewing this tonight.
No, I'm just passing it out. It's going to be, um, he just gave me the full plan, so law says you have to submit everything twenty-one days in advance. So I'm going to push.
This is June?
Yeah, push it out to June thirteenth.
Yeah, I'll be there then, so, okay.
So I will pass these out to everybody. I, I gave out the, the application last week, but I included it this week also in case you misplaced it and that you have everything.
Is it worth also talking about a tweak to solve, um, Mr. Keith's problem?
That could be, you know, absolutely part of that discussion to, you know, look at plan development again and say, is it?
Right.
You know, do you want to?
If the list of the loud, commercial, we just have to look at that.
That's a very good, or is it the requirement for commercial to prohibit that? You know, it's a question to.
I put that in for the things we need to consider, you know, the uses and, and amount of residential, um, for those things.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we need to get a catchy name for whatever we're doing in, uh, September. So we need to think about that because if Matt finds our link, that'll be our first, uh, you know, something needs to go that we're, we're planning on a housing thing that's called this and we're going to have great refreshments and some interesting speakers and.
Well, Judy, Judy said no more fairs, but actually the Friends of Postpon Fair went really well.
I heard that.
Did.
Yeah.
I, I sure did, but that's something that's kind of sexy and everyone goes to. And who wants to come to a, hear about housing problems in the Upper Valley? So I don't know, we have to.
Right, I think we just need to, to market it.
Oh, well, that's why we need a name, okay? So except the grater, you come up with a name.
Okay, alright, name.
Yeah, just want to remind the board that, uh, my budget was cut slightly on this last year and I don't have money for doing mailings. So we have to talk to outside groups or solicit the select board for the ones, you know, a mailing.
We're going to have to solicit the select board.
Mailing is about a thousand dollars.
Yeah, we're going to have to solicit this, that's all there is.
Yep, just putting that out there.
Okay. Well, hopefully you get the raise and we didn't get the money for the mailing, right? So that's how the cookie crumbles.
Folks got a good raise this year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
Are we ready to? I'm ready to.
Where's Jay?
How do we do?
Whatever we're talking about, I said it.
Whatever you're talking about, I've heard it, yeah.
Very good. Thank you all, thanks Judy for coming. Thank you, you're welcome. Thank you for indulging me.